This meeting of the City Eureka Springs City Council come to order. The clerk will do the roll call, please.
Mr. McClung will be late. Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Ms. Zeller?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Mr. DeVito?
Here.
Mr. Perkypile?
Here.
All right. Please stand for the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next will be approval of the agenda. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Changes, deletions, additions. Ms. Snyder.
Unfinished business number eight, the water and sewer rates. We're still doing some research on there and Lonnie is still working on a lot of stuff. I'd like to table that hopefully until the next meeting. In the meantime, we need a massive workshop at Lonnie's request, me and Mike.
Second.
On water rates?
Okay. Ms. Snyder.
Mr. Perkypile. Can I question that? I mean, can we question Lonnie? Did you prepare for this?
Yes, I have.
He's got some information.
Let him finish.
I have a lot of information prepared, but I think with all the different situations, we really need a workshop to address this because we've got consumption rates. We've got our water rates. We've got our bond issues that we have to deal with. And there's really a number of issues that factor into this. And I think it would be a lot better to work it out in a workshop or maybe it might take two workshops.
Okay. Anybody else?
Item seven, I'm sorry. Item five under unfinished business, film industry tax incentive update. There's nothing to report, so I'll just put it onto the next agenda for the next meeting.
Number five. Is that what you said, sir?
Yes, sir.
Postpone.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Yes, sir.
New business item number five, discussion of turning over control of Black Bass Dam to Parks. After my discussion with Dwayne Allen about the dams, two dams that the cities have control of, I want to remove this item.
Remove, not postpone?
Remove it, and if we bring it back up, it'll be at a later date.
Second.
Any further?
Do we just verify number one under new business has been canceled?
Postponed.
Postponed, I'm sorry.
Ms. Snyder.
I have a question. Do we have, I don't have anything on vehicles used as limousines. Was there, do we have, we're considering an amendment to an ordinance or something on that? Or were we just going to talk about it?
Yeah, it was supposed to be a discussion. I thought it was on here.
Oh, it is on here.
It is on here.
Number four. I just wondered whether there's any material to discuss or...
General information only.
Okay, because I got an email from the, yeah, from Glenn today, and he's not here. So I wonder whether we still need to discuss this.
Mostly so we can probably have the city attorney look at some more.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Any further?
If Mr. McClung doesn't get here, do we want to postpone number four? Or go ahead with it. Under unfinished business, sorry.
Play it by here. Give him time to get here.
Okay.
And I have, this, my mistake. I need to add the state and city address to after approval of the agenda before approval of the minutes. It is ready. I just forgot to put it on there. Okay, with that, go back over this recap. State of the city goes in after the approval of the agenda. Number five, unfinished postponed. Number eight, unfinished postponed. Number one, new business postponed. Number five, new business removed. Any other changes, deletions, corrections while we're here?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. All right. Let me delve into this. All right. State of the city 2014. I bring this address to the citizens of council now at this meeting on February the 10th, 2014. We were fortunate to have a very good year in 2013 in that our tourist attendance and tax revenue was up and our occurrence of misfortune was down. We accomplished construction of the long-awaited and much-anticipated new public bathrooms adjacent to the newly opened music park in the North Main parking lot, which would be a great addition to the infrastructure of the North Main area. We're currently finalizing details to start construction on our sidewalk project on north side of Highway 62, which will run from Highway 23 north to almost the intersection of Highway 23 south. We also just finished the new pavement of the 1.2 mile long Lake Leatherwood Road, which will now allow much smoother access to the lake park and facilities. Pardon me. There'd be consumption of liquids throughout this. First department we're talking about is police department. The police department has continued its community involvement as well as performing its law enforcement role. Some ESPD stats for 2014 were 243 arrests, 1,285 citations issued, 319 written warnings, 6,943 parking citations, 512 criminal complaints, 2,077 calls for service. These do not include the officer-initiated incidents, so. Animal control stats are 200 calls, 47 impoundments, 40 returns to the owner, six adoptions, one transferred to the Good Shepherd Humane Society, zero euthanized, and 10 citations written. For fire EMS, the Eureka Springs Fire Department, Fire EMS department is our other 24/7 days a week city emergency department, which employs approximately 13 personnel from the chief all the way down to the last firefighter. City Eureka Springs Fire EMS has over 130 years of service in 2013. The department held an open house to welcome members of the community and gave presentations, had fire trucks on display, and food for the public. Eureka Springs Rural Fire Department purchased property on Highway 23 South near Hills Peak to build a new volunteer fire station. This will be station number seven. It will cover the gap between the city fire stations and the new closest facility located in the Buckmount area. Eureka Springs Fire Department hosted another successful first responder conference despite winter weather. The 2013 Midwest Responder Conference was a great success and had approximately 150 attendants. The staff is gearing up, getting ready for another conference in the February. Oh, I'm sorry. That was the 2013. They're getting ready for the 2014, which was just held this last weekend, and that's 150. The Arkansas Forestry Commission assisted Eureka Springs Rural Fire Department with obtaining a brush truck and a tanker truck. Both vehicles, there he is, Mr. McClung. Both vehicles were obtained at less than half of the cost of new such vehicles. Actually, it's about a fourth of the cost. Fire station number one obtained a military-grade generator powered by the administration offices in the event of a power failure, and it is currently being looked at to get hooked up with the three-phase. Arkansas Trauma Systems awarded a $1,400 grant to the fire department for the purchase of medical gear. Eureka Springs Fire Department funded a new radio repeater to serve as a backup to the primary channel. It also serves as a primary repeater for the department's secondary channel. The new repeater is digitally capable. Eureka Springs Fire Department hosts monthly CPR classes for the public and continues to instruct at various levels, including pediatric, healthcare provider, and layperson CPR. Eureka Springs Fire Department has been active, continuing education, and have provided instructors for the Arkansas Hazardous Materials Weekend sponsored by the Arkansas Department of Emergency Management. Okay, here we go. Firefighters also attended training on bomb response and additional hazardous response issues. Springdale Fire Department shared instructors with the department and presented an enlightening class of modern firefighting hazards. Eureka Springs Fire and EMS played host for a number of classes, including the Arkansas Fire Academy's regional instructor update, Arkansas Department of Emergency Management's basic and advanced monitoring classes, and hazardous material chemistry. Volunteers and EMS crews provided standby medical crews for the popular Eureka sporting event. The department received high praise from the organizers and visitors for their visibility and participation. Eureka Springs Police Department arranged for the fire department to acquire one of their used squad cars. The patrol car is used to send crews to training at other departments and at the Arkansas Fire Academy. Eureka Springs Fire Department visibility and community interaction increased in 2013 thanks to a comprehensive fire prevention program, appointment to the experienced public information officer of an experienced public information officer, a frequently updated Facebook page, and the department's growing website, a rural fire-wise program, and through the fire marshals' inspections and assistance. Stats for EMS from 2010 to 2013. 2010 had 1,277 calls. 2011 was 1,298 calls. 2012 was 1,432. And 2013 was 1,435 calls. Next department's parks and recreation. The Parks and Recreation Department has authority over all parks, springs, gardens, and bodies of water related to the parks. The Parks and Recreation Department regulates events in all city parks by way of authorizing and issuing certain usage permits. They use the city tax and grants for projects in the various areas under their authority. Parks accomplishments for 2013 are soccer scoreboard provided by Community First at Lake Leatherwood Parks. Cardinal Springs Rain Garden completed by a grant from Arkansas Forestry. The project won an award for Green City. Received a trail grant from the Arkansas Highway Transportation Department for Green Garden Trail for $40,000. Parks completed a master plan for the Lake Leatherwood City Park. Voters passed an initiative petition for 1/8 cent sales tax. 1.2 miles of new paved road on Lake Leatherwood City Park. New rock work and servicing at Kaliff Springs by the Preservation Society. Crescent gazebo was painted Preservation Society. Moves us on to parks, I'm sorry, public works and wastewater treatment. Our Public Works Department has the responsibility of keeping our potable water system intact and service to assure quality water to provide commercial customers. They are charged with maintaining and operating our wastewater-sewer system. They work closely with the state and federal regulatory agencies to assure the effluent meets the standards set forth to achieve maximum health and safety standards for the public. They are also charged with the maintenance of our city streets by making surface and substructure repairs as needed. The weather in 2013 had a large impact on public works. The spring storm caused major wind damage in a wide path through the city limits. In August, severe flooding resulted in Carroll County beginning, declared a disaster area, I'm sorry. We experienced higher-than-normal precipitation during the entire year. In December, we experienced two ice and snow storms in extreme cold conditions throughout the month. Water and wastewater funding were down as all bond funds were depleted in 2012. And due to the wet weather and reduction in our customer base, we sold less water than we have in the last five years. Wastewater 2013. Several improvements were made to the wastewater plant, including new underground three-phase wiring, repairs to the headworks, new effluent flow meter, and maintenance to one of the motive pumps. Repairs were made on several of our buildings, doors, and windows, thus improving our resistance to freezing weather while decreasing our utility cost. Plant water usage was cut in half by repairing service line leaks and adjusting plant procedures. Repairs were made to numerous sewer systems or sewer mains due to the failing pipe and root intrusion. A slight increase of inflow to our collection system was obtained by aligning manholes and installing rain bonnets. Our sewer camera was rebuilt, which improved our ability to correct problems when they became an emergency. The Glen Street Sewer Rehab Project was started. Several rehab projects are being planned for the coming year, including a plan to utilize pipe bursting. On the water side for 2013, we saw an improvement in our water quality and will continue our efforts to eliminate a water loss. By scheduling flushing in problem areas and expanding our use of automatic flush valves, we had fewer incidents of iron and magnesium in our water system. By beginning to repair and replace pressure-reducing valves, we're slowing our water loss and preventing future problems. We continue to replace meters and service lines, concentrating on lead lines. This improves in quality and increasing revenue. Our incidence of mainline leaks were decreased from the previous two years, and we were able to locate several leaks and repair them, thus further reducing the portion of water loss. We began with the assistance of Carroll Boone Water District, which improved and added all our storage facilities to SADA, or C-S-A-D-A, allowing us quick response to water problems that help and has tracked our water usage and loss. On the street side for 2013, street projects focused on improving stormwater drainage was the main accomplishment. Numerous streets and road edges are being destroyed by poor, to no drainage. We poured concrete swells dipped in line ditches, gradient in applied compact base rock. We began drainage repairs in the spring, which was beneficial to the amount of precipitation that occurred in Eureka Springs. After we were declared a federal disaster, street projects had to be adjusted. First, respond to the damage that occurred. And secondly, to finish projects meeting FEMA funding guidelines, which included mitigation projects. Benton Street had a large building removed to protect the rooftops of the spring street. We then reestablished drainage and installed a large curb along the edge of the street allowing for stormwater flow and pinning the top of the hillside to the ledge as the buildings along spring streets were flooding and the entire area was in danger of sloughing off all the way to Indian Cave Reservation. We completed street projects on King, Claymont, Grand, and all springs. We have several state aid hotmix overlays planned for 2014 as well as the installation of approximately 2,500 feet of sidewalk on East Van Buren, which will be bid this spring. Moving on to CAPC. CAPC reported a .6 increase in overall taxes from 2012. During 2013, the CAPC calculated $1.12 million in free public relations from print entities only. They would include such publication as the Arkansas Democrat Gazette, Cityscapes, Tulsa World, Chicago Sun-Times, Kansas City Star, Springfield News Leader, St. Louis Post-Dispatch, and others. The Arkansas Gazette's statewide edition is attributed with nearly $301,000 in positive stories about the good things in Eureka Springs. Of note, this figure does not include radio, television, or the internet, which is where it is estimated that an additional $1.5 million in free public relations was generated from the Woodsong's old-time radio hour alone. Carroll County during 2013 was consistently the fifth-largest tourism revenue producer in the county of, or county in Arkansas. This is very important as Eureka Springs is the main city within Carroll County that collects the overall tourism tax. The tax through November 2012 totaled $610,703.45, a .5 increase from the same period in 2012. Other cities such as Breville and Green Forest make a slight collection to the tax, but Eureka Springs collects a lion's share. The city's tourism tax generated approximately, and I'm hoping I'm reading this right, is $41.2 million in real dollars spent in 2013. Moves on to Transit in 2013, 13? Okay, that's a drink of water. 2018? 2013, with federal help, Transit was able to install a new above-ground diesel tank, new insulated doors on the trolley barn, a new air conditioning unit for downtown depot, and was able to secure new tools for the mechanics. Transit spent $80,163, with the Federal Transportation Administration paying 80% and councilwoman the other 20. Ridership was down 8.5% for 2013, which was better than the 14% in 2012. Weather problems in the spring may have contributed to these numbers. In 2013, Transit gave a total of 120,552 miles, traveled a total of 158,716 miles, and spent 10,774.15 hours in service. Transit is looking forward to the April delivery of their new shorter, low-floor trolley. They're also making improvements to the trolley barn with new lighting and heating system. When the weather warms up, they'll make repairs, seal the rest of out Plainfield Hill Park and ride parking lot. The share-ride service, pardon me, has increased dramatically in the last few months. This service is targeted for the low-income or disabled patron who cannot afford a car or cannot drive one due to a disability. However, this program is open to anyone who wants a ride. They can go anywhere in the state of Arkansas if the patrons will be willing to pay the fare. Moves us to building official. It's brief. The building official issued 213 permits ranging from accessory structure, construction and repair to wall signs. Accumulative total revenue raised by the issued permits was $3,200, let's see, $3,026.88. City awards, honors, and accomplishments. Eureka Springs celebrated 30 years as the Tree City USA, oldest in Arkansas in 2013. Eureka Springs received the Arkansas Urban Forester Grant to create Cardinal Springs Wetland Demonstration Project, which includes an interpretive sign and brochure on rain gardens. Also the winner of the Municipal League and Arkansas Business Magazine Green Initiatives Award for the Cardinal Springs Projects. Eureka Springs received funding from the Arkansas Arts Council for the North Main Music Sculpture Park, designed and created by Renaga, I'm going to try his last name because I'll get it wrong. Received an Arkansas Heritage Month Grant from the Arkansas Department of Arkansas Heritage to produce 15 historic street vignettes, many documentaries to expand the information on the downtown interpretive signs with UR codes. Eureka Springs Planning Commission approved 20 new commercial construction projects, and a new zoning map is in the process. Eureka Springs Historic District Commission reviewed 325 applications for certificates of appropriateness and received certified local government grant funds for commissioner and staff training. Eureka Springs City Council coordinated the many arts festival, the first annual Eureka Springs Motorcycle Art Show, the Art Wall, and began the Eureka Springs Independent Film Festival. Members of the city government attended conferences hosted by Arkansas Parks and Tourism, Arkansas Municipal League, Arkansas Historic Preservation District, and Rural Services. We also participated in the legislators luncheon in Little Rock hosted by the Greater Eureka Springs Chamber of Commerce. In conclusion, our city government is a traction such a matter that allows us to serve the citizens regardless of who holds elected offices at any given time. It is our job that these elected officials, that those elected officials to provide the best services for the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. We must remember this standard regardless if we agree or disagree at the council table or in and out of the public. I hope the year 2014 brings our citizens and our city much prosperity and well-being. I, as your mayor, will work towards those goals. Thank you respectfully submitted and worth paid mayor of City Eureka Springs. The end.
You're here.
All right. Moves us on to approval of the minutes for January 2007. Twenty-seven, 2014.
Thank you.
Any changes, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like a son? Okay. I don't think we have any reports as far as any other departments, so we'll just blaze through those, go to public comments if we have any. Do what? Okay. Come on up.
My name is Rachel Bricks, and I would just like to add to the long list of awards and distinguishing markers that Eureka Springs was chosen out of one only, one of only five cities in the country to be named for Dog Town, USA. We are recognized in the nationally acclaimed magazine Dog Fancy as being one of those towns because we're so wonderfully dog-friendly. So I just wanted to add that.
Our bar.
Thank you.
Let's go to the dogs.
Okay.
Okay, moves us to unfinished business. Number one, discussion ordinance proclaiming or reclaiming McCune and portions of Hartman. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Ms. Snyder.
I think it's pretty much been decided that they can have McCune, since it's like this far from the house. And Hartman has been the big contention. If we're only going to do Hartman to the cross street, then we're going to have to make sure that, we asked the mayor to inform whoever it is, the public works, police, whoever it is, it does it. There have got to be signs posted at the top of that hill where Amity actually does not curve and go down saying, "This is not a through street." No turnaround, private property ahead. Whatever signs or stuff they do, some people will, like me, will quit going down Amity and trying to use his private property to turn around because once he puts in his gate fence, whatever he ends up doing, they ain't going to have a place to turn safely. So whoever does these signs, especially considering that Amity actually meanders off into the river. We need to put end of road, you know, no turnaround, no through street.
Where the boundaries are going to be, then I'll take.
If it's not going to go all the way across, which it doesn't sound like it is.
Mr. Mitchell?
I think at the last council meeting, Alderman DeVito made a motion to vacate McCune Street and Hartman to the corner of Cross Street and that property boundary. I think what we didn't do, though, was ask the city attorney to go ahead and draft that ordinance force, and I think that's probably why it was on the agenda today. So I'd like to make a motion that the city attorney, I'm sorry.
I think the, as the city clerk, that I did include to instruct.
He's asking that you take back the, the whole street and then decide later whether to only vacate a portion of it or to vacate the entire thing. And so there are actually two that I have seen and have no problem with using either one. If you don't vacate the entire street, the second portion would be returned to Parks Authority at the end. And they're not to be confused. He also prepared two that would go ahead and vacate the property. Those are not the two that should be used. The two that should be used, or one of the two that should be used is the two that just take back the authority. also said he would provide them to the county distribution. And I don't know if he did that or not for sure.
Mr. McLean.
Uh, now, I didn't go downstairs and check my box, and so they may have been in there, they may not have been, however.
Thank you.
I think we received, just like the motion was and approved at the last meeting, as James made it, and, and take back some parts, wanted to take me to take back and move forward. No reason to delay. Since we already have the motion and the attorney, and the attorney has obviously
heard that we're only, seem to be interested in vacating Hartman to the, to the corner of Cross Street. And if the attorney is comfortable with another attorney's drafting an ordinance to present to us, then I assume that you'll pick the one that you want to present to us.
I think, as I said, you could have either one, but if you only wanna go to the portion, the one that he drafted is appropriate, and it does thereby save the city the expense of me simply drafting another one, says exactly the same thing that you should have.
Mr. Snider.
Um, the testimony that you had the last time from the owner of this property that has the circle drive in it, uh, he has a problem with people tearing up whatever barriers that's there. Would it be terribly complicated if we added to Hartman, if we vacated Hartman, the, the part that is marked in yellow on the map that we have, and just took it to the other side of Cross Street, which, um, uh, would, it's only, we're only gonna be adding thirty feet to it, but that would give him, um, the fifteen feet here. Uh, no, I'm not, I'm only talking about the yellow part, the part that.
If you extend it to here, that cuts off the access.
No, I only wanna extend it to here, just, just across, just to the other side of Cross Street.
That cuts off the access, that's why we're stopping it on that side.
Well, didn't we agree that it really wasn't an access, that you can't make that turn? Uh, well, okay, if it's gonna complicate things, okay, I was just trying to make life a little bit easier for him because, uh, this is a real problem with people just simply using his driveway whether he wants them to or not. And if he, if, if we, if we added thirty feet to that vacation there, it would give him the fifteen foot, uh, an additional fifteen feet in front of his property that belonged to him. You see what I'm talking about? All I wanted to do was just add thirty feet to the vacation. Because you could still go down Hartman and whatever that, that, what is that alley there? Although, I understand that that, there's a very difficult curve and nobody can get through there anyhow. So that isn't where you wanna go anyhow. If you wanna have access to, uh, this section one-twenty here, you don't go that way anyhow because you just can't get there from here. I'm, I'm just thinking of making things a little bit more just for this man who owns this property, who's just put in this position where he has to put up with all this traffic all the time.
But the contention is if you go to there, then K J and U R can't get onto their property.
If you go to here.
Yeah.
They can come in the other way.
No.
There is, there is no other way.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right. Yeah, I was just trying to make life easier for him, 'cause that's not gonna work, okay. Yeah.
Ms. Eller.
Yeah.
Uh, the owner was okay with the concept of putting a reinforced concrete wall as a barrier there, just a short one.
Yeah.
Tying his fence into it, his, his gate into it, so I don't think that that's something, in, in fact, he agreed to, that that would be a good option for him.
Okay, I just thought I would bring it up just now rather than later.
Well, Mr. Snider.
But that ties into what I first started by saying about signage, not, like, signage. They're not gonna be able to turn around, and the, the angle of the corner and stuff is gonna be virtually impossible to do in anything bigger than a small little car. So we've got to get signage ups. So whoever it is that we direct to contact on this, I guess that's what I'm asking.
Well, it'll eventually be the Public Works, but I'm gonna have to know all the details about where to put what before I tell them to do anything.
Well, we have to improve that before we can, it's gonna have to be done.
Yeah, let's do that first. And that's my point, all we're doing here is just reclaiming the authority with this ordinance, and then we have time to, to do all the signage and everything, even after we pass the, the next ordinance.
Okay.
Noted. Uh, we, you know, we oughta go ahead and provide this a number and, and.
Place it on its first reading?
And, and pass it on its first reading, yes.
Second.
For discussion, Mr.?
Um, as long as this has been dragging out, can we do two readings tonight?
This what?
So as long as this is, this one has been dragging out, can we do two readings tonight?
We have, let's do the first one.
What are the council's?
Let's do the first reading.
Get a number on it. Okay, uh, the vote is to put a number on it and pass it on its first reading, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The ordinance number will be twenty-two oh two. An ordinance reclaiming authority over part of the unopened portion of Hartman Street and McCune Street from the Parks Commission's authority previously granted over green space within the city. Whereas the City Council of Eureka Springs previously placed green space within the city under the authority of the Parks Commission, and whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, now desires to possibly close, vacate, and dispose of part of the unopened portion of Hartman Street and McCune Street, now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section one, the authority of the Parks Commission over the following described property previously granted to it by the city is hereby removed and reclaimed by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, which portions of streets are described as follows. All that part of Hartman Street that is adjacent to and abutting blocks one-twenty-two and one-twenty-three in the Riley and Armstrong survey of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, except subject to and not including Cross Street or any portion of Hartman Street that is south of Cross Street. All that part of McCune Street that is adjacent to and between blocks one-twenty-two and one-twenty-three in the Arms, uh, Riley and Armstrong survey to the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section two, the repeal clause, all ordinances, resolutions, and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. DeVita.
I have to approve ordinance number twenty-two oh two on its first reading. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I move to read it a second time.
Suspend the rules in place, ordinance number twenty-two oh two on its second reading by title only, is that what you're saying?
Second.
I've had a brain freeze, give me a minute.
Did you get all that? Okay. May I second it? All right, we're gonna do a real call.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance twenty-two oh two, an ordinance reclaiming authority over part of the unopened portion of Hartman Street and McCune Street from the Parks Commission's authority previously granted over green space within the city.
Mr. DeVita.
I have to approve ordinance number twenty-two zero two on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read the same ordinance, 'cause I don't have the number in front of me.
Twenty-two. Twenty. Twenty-two oh two.
Twenty-two oh two on its third and final reading.
Title only.
By title only. Thank you. Mr. DeVito.
Second.
Okay, stand by for a real call.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance twenty-two oh two, an ordinance reclaiming authority over part of the unopened portion of Hartman Street and McCune Street from the Parks Commission's authority previously granted over green spaces within the city.
Mr. McLean.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, ordinance twenty-two oh two on its third and final reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We got a real call on the third. All right.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Yes.
Mr. Snyder.
Yes.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Six zero.
Moving right along. Brings us to number two, discussion of ordinance twenty-one ninety-eight, be the second read. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Is Mr. Garrelle still standing at the door? Does he? Leroy, do you wanna come on in?
I'm just, the feedback was so bad, I'm just cutting down here.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You bet. People got a motion to discuss, second?
Yes, and a second.
Okay, floor's open.
Um, do you have an opinion?
This is business license for multifamily buildings.
Oh. It's Bobby. Did Bobby come on this?
Uh, yes, he did it one time, yeah. I think.
Bobby and I had a discussion, Bob Ray and I had a discussion about this, and I understand what Bobby's saying, and I think he understands what I'm saying. Uh, and so if I misquote it, I thought he was gonna be here when I gave my opinion, but he's, he was not able to be here last time, I think, and, and I guess he's here tonight. So if I misquote him or my own conversation with him, uh, you may have to get corrected from him, but, um, basically, what you are dealing with is you are able to issue certificates of occupancy on residential apartments, but the ones that are in place already don't have to be reissued certificates of occupancy unless there's basically a transfer of ownership or a complete rebuild. Uh, and at this point, that means that everything that's setting out there is basically going to get grandfathered in, and his concern is we need to create, before you would pass something like this, a list, so there's not an argument down the street, uh, about who existed, when, and where, uh, when this was be passed. You certainly, uh, could issue certificates of occupancy and therefore cause the new construction, uh, be brought up to the standards you're talking about as far as the qualifications in the ordinance as to height and space and all that, uh, but to try to go back and force it on some of the places that are in existence until you got changes of ownership, which is the most likely occurrence, or, or major rebuild, uh, is basically gonna leave you, uh, with a whole lot of nothing being accomplished by the ordinance. I mean, it's, it, if you understand it's a starting point that twenty years from now may have most of it up to code, uh, or up to your expectations, that's great, but if you expect overnight him to be able to go out and make people stop renting space that may be too, uh, short or too small in the, in the attic areas, or not have the proper fire extinguishers or, or other things, he really doesn't believe that he can enforce, and he's probably right, against the ones that already have certificate occupancy, because the certificates of occupancy don't expire year to year, or every five years or anything else, they expire upon termination of the current ownership, or when the, uh, buildings are not occupied for a, a, a long period of time, or where there's a major rebuild of the structure.
Mr. Snider.
My biggest concern, excuse me, is the safety of people, and basically, we're talking fire extinguisher, C O two fire alarm. Um, there's got to be something we can do, I mean, we're talking three very minor but life crucial items. Is there no way we can do this, whether it's, what, if, if they've been, let's say they've been renting for the last five years, you know, apartments, whatever, when this resident is moving out and this one is moving in, is there no way, at that point, in between renters, that we can make, that we can say this must be installed?
Not by using the certificate of occupancy, because the certificate of occupancy doesn't change upon the change of renter, it changes on the change of ownership.
Right, but that's what I'm saying, is there something we can do to protect the citizens?
I think that, uh, that would be something you would have to refer back to planning and have planning look into, there are ways of doing it, I think, and I think, uh, from talking to Mr. Ray, he would agree there are things, ways of doing it, but, uh, this is not necessarily the quick way to do that. This, this is going to take a long time for enough turnover to really get any effect.
Mr. McLean.
Um, two things. Uh, one, for residential properties, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that once a certificate of occupancy is given for a resident, single family or multifamily, that it's given and it's done, it's.
That, that's the conclusion.
If I sell my house, the next person that moves into it doesn't have to get a C of O, or the next person, or the next person, or the next person.
That's true if they're gonna own or occupy, it is not necessarily true if they're going to rent the property.
Does, do we have something that says that now? We do not.
Um, actually, I think it is part of the Southern Building Code that would allow that, that are, are part of our.
I don't think it follows the Southern Building Code anymore.
Are, are part of the Building Code we follow, but, uh, I'd have to look to be sure, but most cities in Northwest Arkansas that follow the same codes we do, do enforce that when a new business occupies an old structure, and that is a new business when they're renting, a new rental.
Are you, are you, are you sure that, that, now, you're talking about when somebody new takes over ownership, if that's what you're saying?
No.
Not as a tenant, if a tenant moves out and another one moves in, not anything you can do.
I think you can with a tenant situation. Uh, other towns do that.
I, I think, well, I'm not so sure they do.
But you're not.
They, they paint, they paint that unit out and maybe change the carpet out, the owner does, and then they bring the next person in.
Well, you're not changing the C of O, no, just because one person moves out and another one moves in.
Right.
No.
Now, there are, uh, advantages for a property owner to have fire extinguishers, the, uh, the, uh, C O two, the, the smoke alarms and all that in effect, and have them in place because of their insurance advantage. It saves them tremendously on their hazard insurance for those properties. In fact, without them, sometimes it can preclude them from, from getting the insurance. So, you know, there is something pocketbook-wise that dictates that policy. Now, I can't say that they do or they don't, but, uh, I don't think it's necessarily our place to regulate something that is not really ours to regulate.
Mr. Mitch.
Since this issue and this draft ordinance came.
Since this issue and this draft ordinance came from planning, would everybody be comfortable with referring it back to planning to get with Bobby Ray and then give us, I make a motion?
Second.
For a discussion on it? If not, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Any opposed? Let me see. That's basketball, bud. Okay. Alright, moves us on to number three, Discussion, uh, Cottage at Number One Magnetic update from the City Attorney by February the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell, it looks like a hand.
I think we are waiting for the City Attorney to give us an update, but I don't think the topic is cottage at One Magnetic, I thought it was the conflict of whether the city even owned the property to have the right to vacate it or not vacate it, is what I thought, but, let, let's find out what, I guess, we'll refer this to the attorney to update.
Well, if you're wanting me to refer to a cottage, you're not going to get anything tonight, because I think I understand it the same as Mr. Mitchell, that what you were looking for was an opinion as to, uh, does the city have a direct ownership interest or not here, and, uh, I'll be, uh, try to be short and try not to be confusing, but, uh, the, the result of what I've looked at, and I've talked to the attorneys for some of the adjacent landowner, or attorney for some of the adjacent landlord, and the attorney for the landlord or there on, uh, the property where the disputed area runs through, and in fact, had a discussion with both of them on the phone this morning again, and, uh, gave them both an opportunity to try to present me anything they wanted me to look at, and they, I was provided some documents to look at. Based on everything I've seen, long and the short of it, is this is no different than any other area that the city was originally sent, I can't see anything that would exclude this from being the city, uh, in the same manner as it has been, uh, in other areas of the city, and so, I would, uh, tend to go along with the three previous attorneys who've give opinions about whether we own or don't own these various places in other parts of the city, and say that, at this point, we probably do, uh, have a recognizable claim of ownership, and if they want to ask the city to vacate it, under the state statutes, they can do that, and go through the procedure and, and may or may not get it vacated through that or not, or they could bring a, a suit against the city. Uh, from talking to their attorney, I think they're going to ask you to vacate it, uh, at this point, uh, from talking to the other attorney, if you do vacate it, I think they are looking at legal action. So, uh, I don't think there's anything clear and decisive in anything I've been given that says we don't own it, and the previous three attorneys that have looked at the same situation in different areas of the 320 say we do own it, twice by the Municipal League and once by another attorney, since, since I've been the City Attorney.
Mr. Mitchell.
This has gone on, I don't know, for a long time, months and months, it's similar to the McElroy one, and we were heading along the vacate route for a good while, and then Ms. Bricks brought up the issue, was the property even under the city's ownership, which caused us to step back and look at the situation again, so we're obviously now back to the issue of, of vacating again, and we obviously have opposing views because there are neighbors that are concerned about vacating that, that the Rock Street and their access of utilities, not that the Rock Street by any means is a viable pathway any more than McElroy's Hartman Street, and what we've been discussing was a viable street in the first place, this one, I think, matches very similarly to what we have been discussing. So, at this point, you're basically saying the Bricks do not have to restart the vacating because they were up to us at one point, it'd already gone to planning and had been to parks, so can they pick up at that point and make the request to vacate, or are you saying they have to go back and start it all over again?
Uh, their attorney's approach, and, and from the discussion I had today, I think the, uh, other adjoining landowners also agree, and, and I don't want to speak for them for certain, but as I understand, they think that at this point, it's past the parks, it's to the point that this table is the, the deciding factor, and the attorney for the petitioners, I understand, is asking that you set it out far enough that there can be proper notifications published in a paper of record, uh, by the clerk's office, which it has to be published twice, uh, I think, so they're, they're asking for it to be set on your agenda, to be considered somewhere in the future, out far enough that there can be a couple of publications.
I'll open that now.
Yeah, no problem.
Was there publications for the McElroy, McKeon?
It's, uh.
McElroy, sorry.
There, there was, uh, the public hearing that was done at parks, and there was a different procedure used for that portion of it than what the attorney is trying to use here for the vacation here. It's a little different.
I'm going to keep going with this one because he's getting really confused now. Why is it different? And why is this attorney just, was he wants it different, why does it have to be different?
Well, uh, I think he wants it to be less, uh, challengeable, if you were to choose to vacate it in court, then there would be more notice, and there would be more of an argument that the neighbors had had their opportunity to be heard.
So, are you recommending that, as a City Attorney to us, that we treat this vacation different than we're just treating, we just treated this one?
I'm not telling you you have to at all, no.
You're not telling us, but you're suggesting it, or?
No.
You're just bringing it up.
I'm telling you that he desired, he said today he desired it that way.
But we don't have to follow that?
No.
Okay.
Mr. McClung.
Um, I believe that in good conscience, it would be a good idea, because it's been so long that this has been addressed, uh, you know, there may be others out there that, that, uh, may want to be heard and may not be aware of these meetings, that maybe their only avenue to this is via the newspaper, whether they live out of state or whatever, but they be property owners or something of that nature, so, I mean, I don't have any problem with that in itself, no. I'm looking at, like, you know, having to come up mid-March, and it only takes two consecutive weeks, so your, your second meeting of a March would be more than ample time.
Mr. Schneider.
Could I ask Ms. Bricks to come up to the microphone?
Yes, you can.
But. Rachel, didn't you guys already publish this to all the neighbors, whatever it is that y'all do?
Yes, um, it was, it was published, the procedure, as it was explained to us, uh, back last year, was that you appear before parks, then you appear before planning, and then it goes to council. When we applied for a vacation to parks, at that time, parks was in charge of, and as far as I know, is still in charge of, conducting the public hearing. The proper notices were sent via certified letter, I sent $60 worth of them, um, and also, we published in the paper. Um, when we did have the public hearing, all of the folks who were either opposed or supported came to that public hearing meeting back on June 17th of 2013, and it seems like every meeting that we had after that was essentially a public hearing because they kept coming, so, there's been several public hearings, really.
Do you remember the ratio or the breakdown of pro and con in the, in the responses to this being vacated? Is there anybody against it, or the neighbors, were they against the vacation?
The, the only people who were against it was the collection of folks, I consider them to be one neighbor, um, although there are several owners of the property, the one neighbor, uh, behind us objected as it was their ingress and egress for their property that they've never used.
Okay, and that's the property that also has one on the other side of the, of their property, on the opposite side?
They've actually got four available to them, I've got a map if you'd like to, it's probably not the appropriate time for that tonight, but.
That's fine, okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, the people that objected, they have no other possible access to their property except this part that you're talking about vacating? I mean, I, I think we're.
They have four other, they have four other accesses.
Okay, so their argument is not that, that they would have no possible access to their property if this were vacated?
They're, from what I remember, uh, one of them had mentioned that it was the access to their lower portion of their property, but the one access off of Magnetic directly connects with all of their property.
Okay, so.
And there, in addition, there are three other access points.
So, it's not, we're still talking about Rock Street, aren't we? Uh, I assume, I mean, at, at this point, I wonder what on earth we're talking about here, because it doesn't sound, okay, um, but we've not established that that's a viable access, the one that they're, that, the one that you want to vacate, is, do we, is there any law that says you have to, uh, prove that it's a viable access to begin with, that that, that it's an actual road, or, uh, because my impression of Rock Street at this point is that it's kind of an imaginary, um, road, I mean, there might be, there might, could probably be a road there someday if somebody wanted to build it, but there isn't, there isn't any, it isn't a practical access at this point, the average person could not go from here to there on what is platted as Rock Street at this point. I'm just trying to see what, what the whole problem is, what the argument is here, uh, because it's not used.
Could be lengthy.
Yeah, I, I.
It has been lengthy.
Yeah, it's just, where they, the, the pieces are not coming together for me, okay, and I'm not going to take up any more time, I'm just trying to understand this, but I don't see what the logic of the complaint is, okay, so, that's right, I'm done.
I'm afraid we're getting ahead of ourselves here, the issue is whether we want to start the vacation process, because all of this will come out, everything, so, to discuss this is just non-productive at this point in time.
So, is that a motion?
So, the issue is to go ahead with the vacation of.
Wait, is that what the attorney suggested?
That's what, he, the attorney mentioned that as a possible.
Right.
What I, what I am suggesting, or what I've, uh, not suggesting, but what I'm telling you, that the desire of the petitioner is to continue on, according to their attorney, with their petition to have the street vacated, and his request was that you set that out a couple of meetings, so that you give time for, uh, publication in the newspaper of this twice. Uh, I'm hearing, I think, from the petitioner tonight, here at the, something different, but I'm not going to put words in her mouth either, you can hear what she's saying, but his desire was to put it back on there, but not to do it next time.
Right, but if it's already been published, why would we have to publish again?
It's his, it was his request, it's not me telling you you have to, or don't have to, it was his request that you do it, and he represents the petitioner, it's not like the people that are opposed to it are asking you to put an extra step in front of the petitioner, it's the petitioner's own counsel that's making that request.
Mr. Perkypile.
Well, hold it, hold it, let's stop the boat right now. Ms. Bricks, you're right here before us, uh, what is your desire to go forward?
Would it be appropriate, if I may, just to ask a couple of questions?
Please do.
First of all, it's my understanding that what Mr. Weaver said is that we are in the 320, we are not in the 320, so the ownership question, as even Mr. McClung has mentioned before, the city doesn't own the street, but the city has control over the street, i.e. an easement, um, so we're not even in the 320, so I'm, I'm kind of confused about that.
That's why it's a vacation procedure.
Right. Um, I just have two questions, if I may, and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask these or not, but a couple of the things that were sent to Mr. Weaver, number one was, is to look at the lack of dashed lines on the plat, if you look at what's in yellow, everything has dashed lines, our property up here in purple does not. I, and from everyone I've talked to, to Gerald Farmer, who did our survey, to just anybody, dashed lines represent an easement, it's common knowledge in survey-making, that that's what dashed lines represent. The other question I had is, what happened to the federal patent? The other question that I had, um, the deeds, I'm, I'm, I'm a little, I'm a little surprised, the, the plat map itself, written by John Riley, is on the plat map that y'all have here, he was commissioned, ordinance 117, he was commissioned to draw Section 15 only, he was commissioned to draw Section 15, he drew Section 15, he signed off on Section 15, Notary Republic signed off on Section 15, nothing, and no one was ever commissioned to sign off on Section 10, no one was ever asked to plat Section 10, we're in Section 10, these are things that I don't, I don't understand, I guess I would just like a couple of answers before I decide if I want to pursue a vacation.
You're not going to get those answers from, from this body here.
That's what I thought Mr. Weaver was supposed to be looking into.
He would have to be a land attorney in order to answer that.
Mr. McClung asked him to get with a land attorney, and it's been two months.
If I may, there is no conclusive evidence that I see, a court may find different, that there is conclusive evidence in what you have there, but as I told the attorney today, there is no conclusive evidence one way or the other, that's what we pay judges for, is to make conclusive rulings when the evidence is in dispute, the evidence is in dispute. I cannot give you a clear answer, and there's not a land attorney out there that'll give you a clear answer either, I think, based on previous discussions on similar situations in this city with the Municipal League's attorneys, and with other attorneys that have went in for vacations of other areas over the last 12 years.
So, would you be recommending then, that we let it go to court, so we can have a legal conclusive?
I think, I think it will likely end up in court, i- if you vacate it, based on the other landowner's claim, and if you don't vacate it, that's up to Ms. Bricks and her attorney, whether they bring on a suit, if they.
Mr. Mitchell.
One question, Ms. Bricks, would you like us to vacate Rock Street? Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. I make a motion that we draft a reclaim ordinance for Rock Street, specific to the boundaries of the Bricks property. A second, Bill.
For a discussion on it? Do you have a discussion on it?
I just have two things, first of all, I, I don't want to post, keep postponing that extra time involved, or whatever, with the newspaper ad thing.
I didn't, I didn't put that in my motion.
Okay, I did not ask for that, and I don't know where that came from, so as quickly as possible, I did redo our application, updated, that I gave to parks last year, that I'll give, I guess, to Ms. Anne, or I don't even know if anybody wants it, but there it is. Um, and I would just, I just want to thank council for putting up with all of this, I know I've taken a lot of time of y'all, and also directing Mr. Weaver to look into this, I do appreciate it, in investigating, because I know, as far as investigating, I know more about this town right now than I ever cared to know, um, I've actually got two big, huge binders of stuff, of documented facts from over a year of research, but perhaps the most important fact that I have learned is not in any book, any archive, or embedded in any truth, and that it's not, that it's not what you know, it's who you know, and no amount of my research is going to trump that.
Thank you.
At any rate, in light of Mr. Weaver's opinion, um, I understand we have to exhaust all of our municipal options before we can proceed to court, so yes, I am asking that we reinstate my vacation application, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. Weaver, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Mitchell, motion, if it's carried, I'd like to know who he intends to procure the legal description of the street.
And the City Attorney, our City Attorney is to, to draft that ordinance with the legal description.
Are you authorizing me to spend money with, uh, a, uh, surveyor?
We'll, 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 counsel here in a minute, won't we, Mr. Weaver?
Who usually does it?
Usually the landowner provides it.
Has that, that happened in the past? Did that happen on?
Is it on your application?
Landowner provided. Landowner provided the description, yes.
Okay, so what do you say?
Described on the application. Okay, whoa, 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 let's slow down now, one at a time, we've got too many people talking at once. Mr. Weaver, I think you got the floor right now, so go ahead.
It is typical that they will put down a description on their application for the vacation at parks. Sometimes that description is insufficient. Uh, we had that a couple of times ago when this council vacated one of the other parcels up here, that we had to have someone, uh, make wording changes because the description didn't close. So what the city normally does is ask the landowner to provide it. That way, if there is a vacation and the transfer of the property is back to the landowner, they know what they're getting because they know what they, uh, provided description-wise. And if there's a problem with the description, then there's not a action against the city for not providing an adequate description. But in rare occasion, the city has, when vacating, actually employed a surveyor to come up with a description. I'm wanting to know before I go out and if I don't get a description from somebody, I can't draw the ordinance. So do I spend city money, because I can't do that on my own, to get a surveyor, or do we get, as we have many times in the past, from the landowner, what they want, and that way they have the wording the way they believe it to be sufficient? And if it's in, if the wording is insufficient, then it rests with them rather than with the city.
It looks like the, the application has exactly what you requested, so we don't need you to get a survey, I guess.
If you're telling me to use that description. Because as I said, often the description, or part of the time, the description in that document doesn't close or is insufficient. And in, under Arkansas law, if it doesn't close, you ain't getting any rights to anything. And if it's insufficient in another manner, uh, one a few years ago would have gave away part of one of our upper streets that was not intended.
Mr. DeVita.
Uh, all of the property in question is on, on the applicant's property, and it's a city right-of-way, it's not city-owned property. So if, you know, if they're giving less than, uh, is, is the actual dimensions of the property, and at this point, I'd challenge anybody to come up with a better characterization of it than what the property owners have, then you end up with a sliver of land that nobody can use, you know, I, I don't see that being an issue in this because we're not talking about city-owned property.
Covers it.
You mean they own both sides of the road, so that makes a difference?
The disputed land is all on their property.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying, okay.
So the motion that we may extend, and what the second did.
Okay, for clarification, let's go back and read the entire motion again, we're in the second, so there's no questions. Get a little convoluted.
Mr. Mitchell made a motion to draft a reclaim ordinance, reclaim that portion of Rock Street that the property owners described. I'm paraphrasing a little bit because I didn't get that very last portion.
Reclaim the, the right-of-way of Rock Street within the boundaries of the property owner. I don't know if it's east-west, north-south, whatever it is, whatever that easement is, it's in, within the boundaries of, of their surveyed property to be vacated.
Thank you. And there was a second.
There was a second. All right, and then, Mr. McClung.
I do have one additional question, and that would be that if, if it's not taken out of parks and say the, and it's just as is, and, and the neighbors wanted to build that road next week, does it have to be taken out of parks before they can build a road? Or can they just build the road?
You cannot just go in and build on a city easement, you would have to get the city's approval.
Well, I understand, but I mean.
If they.
Do we have to get parks involved once again to?
As I understand, this has been released to green space, and yes, at this point, parks has control over.
So either way, parks would have to be involved.
Yes.
Further, you ready for the motion and the second? Vote on it. If nothing else, hold on, Mr. Weaver.
Clarification again, you're directing me to use the description from their application. Please tell me that is true or not.
He wants to tell you, like, you tell us stuff, maybe, maybe not?
I wa, I want you, I want you to tell me what you want to reclaim authority over because if you don't and we reclaim the wrong thing, you're starting over again.
Do you know something that we should know?
I know that a legal description is required.
Is there, is this not a legal description?
I don't know if it is or not. Honestly, I'm not a surveyor. I can't take that, and maybe, maybe Mr. McClung, who's been in real estate for a long time, can and sit there and, and tell you whether it closes. I don't know whether it closes or not.
I'm just having, I'm sitting here befuddled with all of a sudden, all this stuff you're bringing up and why it's coming up and why I've never heard it before when we're vacating. It just seems very odd to me.
Because.
Not a meeting.
Very odd.
The same reason as Mr. Cypress provided the description he wanted to use. The same reason as when we vacated up here on top of the mountain three months ago, they provided the legal descriptions. The same reason as when we divided the other portion about the same time, I asked that they provide a description, when they provided it, it said in their description, uh, Riley only, uh, survey instead of Armstrong and Riley, which is the normal way it's viewed, and I asked that they go back and look at it, and they provided a new description that they wanted used based on the fact that it was missing part of the words. If you don't have a proper legal description, you're not conveying anything, whether it's...
Mr. Brick.
Uh, direct this to our city attorney. If this, in your opinion, we'd like you to draft this ordinance to reclaim this section of Rock Street, um, if this, in your opinion, after you review it, is not a legal description.
I can't tell you if it's a legal description or not.
Okay.
A surveyor can tell you that.
Well, uh.
Is that who did this one?
Huh?
Well, okay, just, just a minute. All right, did we have a legal description for Hartman and McKee?